I'd like to bring the Building and Grounds Subcommittee meeting to order attendance, please.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
The first thing on the agenda is renaming of early college high school to the Frederick Douglass Collegic Academy, and Mr. Gero, would you like to speak on it?
I sure would. So, the Frederick Douglass Collegic Academy at North Shore Community College. We would like to request to name the new early college high school at North Shore Community College, the Frederick Douglass Collegic Academy at North Shore Community College. The reason Frederick Douglass's name is being requested for this school is because we sought a local historic figure who could spark the curiosity of students and provide them inspiration. Frederick Douglass escaped slavery and became famous as an abolitionist and a remarkable orator. The more our students learn about Frederick Douglass, they will know he stands for freedom and represents the spirit of all who strive to make the world a better place. Frederick Douglass is known to have lived at three different residences in Lynn. One of those residences was on New Hall Street on Sagamore Hill, which is adjacent and looks over North Shore Community College. Together with North Shore Community College, we hope the naming of Frederick Douglass Academy resonates with our shared commitment to the young scholars in this school whose stories are still unwritten and for whom we hold great hope.
Thank you. Any questions?
I make a motion that we name the early college high school, the Frederick Douglass Collegic Academy.
Second.
And move it to the full committee?
And make a mo— yes. Move it to the full committee.
Make a motion to move it to the full committee.
Okay, second. Vote, please.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
The second thing on the agenda is renaming of early childhood center to—we made an amendment on this—to the Virginia Barton Early Childhood Center.
And I make a motion that we call the Early Childhood Center, the Virginia Barton Center.
Early Childhood.
Early Childhood Center.
Second.
People want to speak?
Could I speak? Virginia Barton is a very special person in the city, civil rights. She strode to bring forth civil rights throughout our district. She worked on Title I for over 20 years, and her phrase that was written in the item was, "Never look down on anyone unless you're looking down to help them up." So, upon finding out that the building where they had her name had been closed, and she does not have any other building named after her, I would like it to be the Early Childhood Center, and that if the Early Childhood Center moves, then her name moves with it. And that's what I'm proposing. Thank you.
And is there anybody else who wants to speak?
I'd like to touch upon that.
Yes, Mr. Penney.
Yeah. I think it's more than admirable that we name the center after Ms. Barton. You know, Ms. Barton was definitely one of our pioneers, you know, with, you know, civil rights in our city, and she did a lot of, you know, a lot of contributions to our city. And I remember as a child, you know, one of the only places I had to go to was the Community Cultural Center. And I know that, you know, Ms. Barton opened many doors for us to be able to have that. And I think it's more than admirable that we do that for Ms. Barton. And Barton finally.
Yes, Ms. Gaetley.
And I would like to thank Member Capola for bringing this to my attention. And she did that, and she came forward, she's like, "But what about Virginia Barton?" And I am so happy that she did that, so we could name this Early Childhood Center after her. Thank you, Mrs. Capola.
You're welcome.
Make a motion? Is there a motion on the table?
Motion. Okay, well.
A motion is already on the floor.
A motion has been made with a friendly amendment to make, as Ms. Gaetley mentioned, that if it moves, because we're renting in that location, but if we move to a permanent location, that the name would go with it to a new location.
Motion still move?
Member Gaetley?
Member Castellanos?
You want just a second? I don't know if—I have a second on the table.
Oh.
Second.
Second.
Sorry.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
The third item on the agenda is the Ford Elementary School Gymnasium, to be naming the Ford Elementary School Gymnasium, the Dr. Claire Crane Gymnasium, and Mrs. Capola would like to speak on her behalf.
Yes. Many people probably still know Dr. Crane is a legend in our community. She worked in the Lynn Public Schools for 50 years, which is a long time to work there. And she—25 of those years, she was the principal at the Ford Elementary School. She was just a phenomenal lady. We have people here who would like to speak in her behalf to let you know how much it would—how important it would be to the people up in—the Ford School District, and especially the—in the Highlands, who she's done so much for, to honor her with this honor, naming the gymnasium after her. So, I'd like to move to amend the rules to allow three people to speak in regards to Dr. Crane.
Suspension of the rules to allow her to speak. Three people to speak on her behalf.
Second.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes. The first person that has come to speak is Attorney James Carrigan. You can come up right here and just speak into the microphone. All of this is recorded, so it will—it will be viewed on the cable network.
Anything you say or do.
Anything you say can be held against you.
Giving the lawyer a heads up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I'm so pleased to be here on behalf of Dr. Crane. We first met in the mid-1970s. I was the executive director of Project Cope, and I recruited a group of people to go to Yale University to participate in a drug treatment program. And I had not met Claire before that, and we became friends for life after that trip. We proposed, and it was adopted by the Lynn School Committee, a plan for drug treatment in the Lynn Schools. About several years later, Al DiVigilio got elected mayor, and he formed a great program called—I forget what it was called, but it was basically business partners with Lynn Schools. And I believe most Lynn Schools ended up with a business partner. For example, GE adopted Lynn Class School, and they had a great program, and they did a great job there. So, I followed it in the newspapers and noticed that Ford School did not have a partner. So, I called Claire up, and I said, "Claire, I don't have a lot of assets, but I'd be glad to help you as a business partner." So, she agreed. And we went from there and had a fabulous time together. She was phenomenal. I'm going to go to the end first. She could bring a crowd to the Lynn School Committee, Lynn City Council, or any place else where you needed a crowd. She just looked at people and said, "Will you join me?" And they joined her like that. It was amazing. And I'm in political organizations, so I know how hard that is to do. But—so, we started—we had a mock trial team, and the thrill of my life, I asked everybody on the team, the first meeting, to introduce themselves, and it was this young fifth grader—he couldn't even say his name. He was so scared. By the time we finished, when we went to trial, he laid a devastating cross-examination on a member of the other team. It was fantastic. Claire—that was the essence of Claire. She uplifted everybody. Everybody respected her. So, she—she was phenomenal. She recruited everybody. She was—Ford School was the first school to be a school for the Lynn Community Health Center. And she did all—she worked with every organization in the city. The Highland neighbors and the parents loved her. They just adored her. They would've gone through walls for her. So, she had—English as a second language at the school. She had a tutor program. She used to get the kids' jobs. She'd get their parents' jobs. She—she did everything possible. It was a real family school in a community-oriented school. She—she ended up getting national awards. Hillary Clinton came to visit Claire in the gym, which we hope you'll name for her. She's an athlete, by the way. Despite everything else, she's a good athlete, good basketball player. And she ended up at Salem State University, heading up a program to teach and develop community schools, which is just the best. It's just the best. Instead of just going to school at 7:30 in the morning and going home at 2:00 or 3:00, you get to meet a lot of people, and you get to see inspiring people from the community come and talk to your class. And you get teachers who love you, and—I mean, all the teachers are like that, I believe. But—but she was really special. And so, I think this is a great idea to name the gym after her, and I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next one that would like to speak is Mrs. Beverly Ellis. She was a Ford School parent when Claire was the principal there, and she's the mother of an Olympian.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening.
Talk right into that, Beverly. Thank you. Bring it down. You can move it right down. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Ellis. I'm here today to give honor where honor is due, and that's Dr. Clara Crane. When I first met Dr. Crane—in 1989, 31 years ago, she inspired me, not only me, but my entire family. I take my kids to the school the first year, and she said, "How about being a grandparent?" I didn't understand what she meant by a grandparent, but she wanted me to go through the neighborhood and help parents and students with their homework, especially people with a second language. So, I said, "Okay, I will try." She said, "You could do it." I said, "I will try, Dr. Crane." She continued to tell me, and she inspired me. But not only inspired me, she also inspired my mother. My mother, at the age of 62 years old, convinced her that she could do her GED, which my mother did. Lord rest her in her grave. But also, she inspired my husband to continue with education, which he went to Wentworth and earned a degree in refrigeration. Also, my brother, he got his GED. And not only my brother, she helped many people with the citizenship, GED, and English as a second language. She—is so motivated, enthusiastic. She's not only a legendary, but she's also a visionary. So, in all aspects, she also loves the Highlands, where the school is located. She do many things for our community. She makes sure that everybody is taken care of. She's very fair, very understanding, and she give—she make people that have no self-esteem to become somebody. She changed the islands up in the Highlands. She closed burials, because when I first moved there in 1989, it was a drug-infested place. She turned that around. She shined the light. And she is very motivated and very inspiring, and I will recommend her, because I watch her. She is like a model to me, a road model to me. And she always said, "I can," never said that I cannot. So, that is in the back of my memory. So, she motivates me, and she motivates many others. She—I watch her. She played basketball. I said, "You are a doctor, not only a doctor in education, but you're a doctor in all aspects. You help people, you encourage people, you motivate people." And I recommended her that she could be a success. And this evening, I hope you'll listen to me. I'm not here saying it because I'm saying it. She is a legendary, and I wish she would get accomplished what she wants to.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis. And our third speaker is Loretta Cappo-Donnell, who everybody knows as a former school committee member and a Lynn City Councilor.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Hello. I know most of you. You're my neighbor, I guess. So, Donna tells. I've been around the neighborhood so often. I'm speaking to two people tonight, one being myself, and the other being a former parent of—up at the Ford School by the name of Lisa Carnley. And I met Lisa many years ago when I was on the school committee, and she was a parent up at—the Ford School. And she is now—I don't know—Executive Director of the Home for Women down on Broad Street, and has done an excellent job. And they put—I was the—she got me in there. Claire got me in there. You know how Claire is. Anyway, she doesn't—but she has a lot of connections, and she—anyway, this is from Lisa Carnley. Dr. Crane was an incredible and at times undeniable force in the neighborhood. She taught, in some cases, multiple generations of her students' families. She was the principal that lived at the school. Most importantly, in my opinion, she increased school attendance and parental involvement and family support and voter participation in neighborhood and Ford Falcon pride. Dr. Crane reached out to all, taking this mom, Lisa, by the arm and walking her back to school. Dr. Crane brought the mayor, school committee, various city councilors, and too many volunteers to name to the Ford family. She even brought First Lady Hillary Clinton and Nasa, too. Direct connections for children and families to see and dream. Dr. Crane literally grew full from an inner-city asphalt schoolyard, and it was an amazing garden. I went up there for lunch when she had the neighbors there for lunch in the cemetery, and a friend of mine brought his baby up to see the garden. But it's memories that were made in the gymnasium, auditorium, theater, community meeting hall, fairgrounds, that remain in the hearts of many, many Highlands families who were fortunate enough to see her example and seek better lives through education. Naming this multi-use space celebrates and solidifies Dr. Crane's commitment to lifelong learning, inclusion, diversity, mutual respect. And from—nice letter? That's from Lisa Carnley. And she wrote a nice letter. I didn't—I only wanted to hit a few things, so I said to Donna, Donna said, "Well, call Claire and see what she wants mentioned." So, I really didn't want to, but I did, and she gave me all these names of her successes, the kids that have become successful. And Mrs. Ellis's was one of them. And the other one was—I don't know—if Dorian Maggio, whom I met over at Salem State. She's going for her PhD now. She was working with us on the community schools over at Salem State University. But I'll just—I think everything has been said about Claire, except I remember most vividly, there was a terrible tragedy up at the Highlands. They had a fire, and the parents died in that fire. And my brother was a funeral director in Lynn, and she called him to come up there to speak to the neighborhood families, and because she didn't know what to do, because everybody in the neighborhood had gone up to the school. And she didn't really—she always knew what to say, but she thought that Walter probably was more into speaking about that to them. And all I remember is he came home, and he just shook his head. He was just amazed at the way the families of the Highlands went to Claire and the things she did for him. And so, she made him one of her next connections. But we all knew each other from school and everything. And she follows these families. It's not like they leave the Ford School and it's goodbye. It's like, if you go to the Ford School and you graduate from high school in Lynn, you get a scholarship. You can get the Dr. Claire Crane Scholarship at Salem State University, which she has put a lot of time in. So, I don't even know if the folks up there know that, but—and actually, for the—I met Jonathan Kraft, another connection of Claire's. That was with the Hill-Low Academy over in Marblehead, and those Marblehead kids were great. They just—they came over all the time. The parents came over to read to the children and so on and so forth. Anyway, I'll end this with saying, I think it's a great idea to name this gymnasium after Claire. She was very much an athlete. She said she just had to give up golf because of the accident, but she's looking forward to going back to it, but she was a big skier, and she was also a coach. And she coached, I think it was a women's softball team. So, you can't light a match to her, so I'm grateful that she's being remembered in this way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we had a limit, so I'm sorry for the ones who really wanted to speak also, because there's quite a few of you here. And I just want to acknowledge Joe Harrison. Please stand. He was—Claire was his third-grade teacher at the Callahan School, and he has hounded me for a long time to see this happen. And Joe, I appreciate it. Yeah. And the others, if you just want to stand, if you're here supporting Claire, just to stand so that people can see that you're all here, from all different walks of life. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we name the gymnasium auditorium at the Ford Elementary School, the Dr. Claire Crane Gymnasium.
Second.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes, and make a motion to move it to the full committee.
I'll make a motion. Let's—I'll second that. Yes, all right.
Sorry. Sorry, I should've added in the beginning.
Okay, the last thing on the agenda for Building and Grounds is a discussion on abandoned house—at 47 Walnut Street, next to Tracy Elementary School, for school use. And Mayor Nicholson, do you want to discuss that at all?
Yes, thank you, Member Gaetley. So, this was a house that the city acquired that was deemed to be unsalvageable by the building inspector, and has been in that case for—been in that situation for a significant amount of time at this point, becoming an issue for the neighbors. And given its proximity to Tracy Elementary School, it's really right there on the lot, the city, working with Counselor Rick Starbidge, the Chair of the Public Properties Committee, and Counselor Walsh, the Ward 7 Counselor and the Council President, felt like the best way forward there would be for the city to turn that property over to the School Department as an opportunity for Tracy to gain more space for the schoolyard, and to use it essentially for, you know, whatever the school deems most appropriate. So, that could be parking, probably, is a leading contender, but other potential uses in the future, particularly as we go forward, whatever process will result from the need to address the Tracy School building at the appropriate time. As you all know, we're working on the elementary school comprehensive facilities plan, and Tracy School, as you know, is a leading contender for something to happen there, and this only would help that effort to have the additional space. So, the city council voted to turn it over to the School Department, and so, we would be looking for a vote from the school committee to accept that and to fund the demolition and preparation of the lot for school use.
Yes, Ms. Gaetley.
I went with Jay Walsh, the president of the city council, over to this property, and I took a look. And I also saw the limited space for children, as the mayor has spoken on. To have outdoor recess, it just really, really needs this property, and I would highly recommend accepting this gift. I call it a gift, because it's going to make it so much better. And the more property we get, the better we're going to be for our schools. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the 47 Walnut Street, next to Tracy Elementary School, for building—for school building use.
Second. Roll call.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Absent.
Absent.
Member Capola?
Yes.
And did it include a motion to move it to the full committee?
And make a motion to move it to the full committee.
Second. Sorry about that.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Okay, now it goes down to Donna.
I'd like to call the Personnel Subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, we have two things on the agenda. The first one is a request to reinstate Director of State federal grants and regulatory compliance. This is an LSAA position, and placed on there by Mrs. McGee—Mrs. Reggari.
Okay. So, this position is a position that's been in the LSAA contract for a number of years. Those who have been in the Lynn Public Schools, people like Alan Benson— Those who have been in the Lynn Public Schools, people like Alan Benson and Andy Lapey, had this position. Years ago, the position just was never filled. And I think part of that was budgetary. And so over the years, we have increased, especially in the past, you know, four or five years, we have increased the number of grants that we have brought in, the amount of money that those grants are, and the compliance requirements behind it has increased immensely. We currently have the one grants manager and a clerk who work on those grants. And so I am respectfully asking that we reinstate the position that used to be in, a position in the Lynn Public Schools to help mitigate the incredible amount of work that the grants have put on this department and to build our capacity to really make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, so to say.
Is there anybody with any questions? Yes, Ms. Gailey.
I just want to add to what Mrs. Regerio said, that there was a person that did this job. And I recall when the cuts were made, we had to cut people out. And with the untamed dollars that we're getting from the state and from the federal government, I highly recommend that we do reinstate this person.
Yes.
I'd like to move that the procurement specialist, is that the one I'm reading?
No, no, first, no.
Wrong one, sorry. The Director of State, federal foundation grants and regulatory compliance be reinstated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes. And I'd like to move it to the full committee.
We can't do it tonight. Yes. So second on that then.
Second.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a request to add a new procurement specialist.
So in the same lane, with the additional grants and just the fact that the high amount of purchasing that happens in all the departments for our schools, for our departments, you know, the procurement laws, we really have to follow those laws, make sure that we're doing our due diligence and getting the right quotes or doing an RFP process. And it's just getting really difficult to do that. Tim Leonard at City Hall is an incredible help for Lynn Public Schools. I myself have had meetings with him. I know Kim has had meetings with him. Molly has had meetings with him, you know, Kevin talks to him all the time. And it's just getting difficult. And so I am asking for a new position on the LPS side. It would be at the same level of like a grants manager to focus in on educating our departments and our principals around procurement laws and procedures and overseeing to make sure that the procedures are being followed, that we're doing all the steps we're supposed to do and tracking that work and working very closely with Mr. Leonard on the city side. Tim Leonard has been part of this process. He helped us develop this posting. We asked him if it should be approved to be part of the hiring committee. We value his input and his expertise. And we will work, this position would work closely with him. So I'm just respectfully asking, could we add this position to help with this area of need?
Okay, is there any questions? Yes, Ms. Gailey.
I want to add to what Mrs. Regerio is saying again. I spoke with Tim Leonard and he is saying that we really, really need this position. And I highly recommend that we get someone in this position to work with him so that monies can go out, because we're getting a lot of federal dollars and they have very, very strict guidelines.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to move the procurement specialist position, be adopted as a new position.
Second. And move to the full committee.
It doesn't have to be two separate motions. It can be one.
No, it can be one motion.
Okay, and move to the full committee.
We just haven't been doing it tonight, so that's all.
That's okay.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
So I'd like to call to order the Policy Subcommittee, Lynn School Committee. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
So on tonight's agenda for the Policy Subcommittee, we have Principal Gallo from Lynn Vocational Technical Institute to come and talk to us a little bit about the admissions policy he's proposing. While he walks up here, I just want to thank you for today's work. I know it's not really what we're talking about, but quite a busy day over there today. So we thank you for your leadership today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did bring Jocelyn Bussman, who's my vice counselor, in case there's specific questions on the policy sheet. I've been very well with her.
So yeah, if you'd like to just kind of speak on what your proposals are, we'd love to hear it.
First of all, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. And I want to start with, so I sent three documents to the committee. The first one being, I don't know what already happened then. One is the original policy. The second is one with the strike throughs with the proposed amendments. And the third one is a two-page, which I'd like to focus on, which has the specific changes that we are making. When this policy was approved, it was with the understanding that we would come before the school committee again and discuss any changes that we may see that are needed immediately. So our proposed changes are on these sheets. A few of them are just pretty much housekeeping. The title, obviously, we have to change the adoption date. The personnel that are involved in this, just changing those names, including putting Superintendent Regerio for Dr. Teltweiler. So I want to start where it says seven, because these next are really the two significant changes that we saw necessary. Remove the interview questions from the selection process section. The reason we want to do that is we were going through these interviews. We realized that some questions may have been a little redundant. But if they are written in the policy, we cannot change them without coming to the school committee. So what we want to be able to do is have that ability to yearly look at these questions, evaluate them, and update them. So what we would do is we would publish these before the application season starts. But being separate, we can then review them and make changes in them. The second significant change, which I think is probably a more significant change, is right now, after our final lottery, we, the policy states that we keep them in lottery order. The oversight that we had was any new student, which is, you know, we have a deadline, but if you're new to Lynn, which include newcomers and anybody coming from outside district, they can still apply. Because we have the last lottery as our order, any new student is placed at the bottom. And that completely defeats the purpose of what we wanted to do. So our proposal is to change it back to the numerical order. And that way, when students come in, they would apply and they would then be placed according to their score. And the policy is written in such a way that if a student comes without records, we use whatever records they do have for the policy. So it's not held against them, because I know many of our students come into ninth grade without previous records. So that is addressed in the policy. The final two, honestly, the next one's a math error. Five times five is 25 percent. So where's the other 75 percent? So we're just updating that to 20 percent each. And the other one's updating the language with the academic grade. This is for the actual shop selection. We want to maintain the same criteria where we flatten the academic curve. We're using the same, the same criteria for the attendance and discipline that we're using for the admission process. We are keeping the same percentages we have at that, because there are other things other than, we also have the shops, shop recommendation percentage in there as well. So any questions?
Yeah, I think, Member Magnolia.
Yeah, so I have a question and a point that I'd like you to change, but it's a very specific reason I want you to change. So the question is, with the attendance data, what's going to happen through the COVID years for that? Obviously, we did suspend some of the admissions, not admissions, excuse me, some of the attendance criteria that were penalizing students last year because of the nature of COVID. But I was just curious as to how those years are going to be handled in the admissions process, just because it's such an anomaly. You know, you have families who kept their children home, not for any reason other than, you know, just being really careful. So can you just talk a little bit about that? I don't want to see the policy necessarily reflect anything different. I was just curious.
Sure. So attendance always involves unexcused absences. So what, so we will be using from January to, I'm just confirming. So we use four quarters.
Okay.
So this would be from third and fourth quarter of 2022 and the last two quarters of, the first two quarters of this year. So our policy is already kind of having, like, a lot of those COVID years are not involved. I know last year we had some, still some attendance issues, but.
Yeah. I appreciate the clarification. The other point, and this is the word I would like you to change, on page seven, as you're going through the student interview, your green language says will be posted annually to the Lynn Tech admissions. And you just have the word "page" there. I would like that to either read webpage or website, because even though this can be provided to folks in the language of their choice, if they're using like a Google Translate, the colloquialism of "page" doesn't always translate, whereas webpage will. So it's on page seven at the top, where the student interview section is in green. Will be posted annually to the Lynn Tech admissions, just webpage or website.
Yeah, it was written in green.
Yeah. So since it's part of the proposed language changes.
Sure, and that's.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I just think it's always good practice, like universal design principles, to eliminate any kind of colloquialisms, which is what we think of when we think of page, as opposed to the technical. But otherwise, I think it's great. Thank you.
I personally love the fact that you're looking at the questions again. I think just reflection on things and looking at things on a yearly basis is great. And I think it will, I think it will make families a lot happier. I think it makes the admissions policy probably flow a little bit smoother. So I do appreciate that and I appreciate, you know, the fact you're willing to take a look at that and you reflect on that. So I think that shows, you know, something that I can appreciate. But other than that, I.
I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, Member Capola.
Not to see, when we're straight like that. How many are still on the waitlist this year?
We had a total of 637 applicants and we accepted 323, so whatever that difference is.
Okay, and what do you foresee coming in during the school year that would be added to that?
So one thing we're hoping to do is be more involved with the welcoming center. So when new students come in, they are aware that this is an option. We do have a large influx of ninth graders coming into the district, especially Yale students. And in the past, the way it's been set up is they've really had very little chance to apply. So that's one thing we want to address. And that's really the main purpose of changing this to that. Changing the waitlist, because again, it was an oversight. We want to make sure that they are, that they are able to come in, because at this point, they really wouldn't, because they'd be number 326 directly, you know, as they come in. Jocelyn, one thing that we have discussed is her getting involved with the welcoming center and making sure that they have the right information they need to provide to students that come into Lynn with the information about Lynn Tech.
That's a large number. That's like a whole nother school.
Mayor Nicholson.
Thank you, Member Dugan. I just wanted to jump in quickly to echo what Member Dugan and other committee members said, just to thank the LVTI team for the reflection and the update. I mean, I think it's great to see us treating these policies as living documents. And, you know, sometimes it takes a long time to update these and we see some of the issues pile up. And so the fact that you guys are all on top of this is just really terrific. And also just to highlight, I mean, that's a huge waitlist. We all know that. I think this is an issue around the state, the number of students that want to get a vocational technical education that don't have the opportunity. And, you know, obviously something we need to continue to work to address, to bring that, to add seats. And I think we're all committed to that. But just to point out, you know, one of the great aspects of having this vocational technical school in our district is we get to make these changes like this. And this is something that other voc tech schools are really struggling with, because the cities don't get to make the changes and their hands are really tied. And you've clearly prioritized equity here and trying to make this amazing opportunity available in a really fair way to our students. And, you know, it's terrific we're able to do that and really appreciate all your work on that and the committee's support.
So I'd like to move.
Member Magnolia.
I'd like to move the changes to the LVTI admissions policy as stated in green, with the one correction for webpage.
Second. Roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes. I'd like to move it to the full committee. Sorry. I thought it had to be two.
We're on that tonight.
Stuck in my brain. Go ahead.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and a motion to adjourn.
Go, second.
Thank you very much.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Principal Gallo. Thank you, Jocelyn.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present. Girl, please rise for a salute to the flag, followed by a moment of silence following the pledge.
Proud to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in recognition of Diane Sandin, retired lunch aid, September 9, 2022; Kenneth Curtis, retired vice principal, September 10, 2022. Thank you. First item on the agenda are the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Policy Subcommittee meeting on September 8, 2022.
Second.
Second.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to accept the 13th regular meeting on September 8, 2022.
Second.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is the Masbo-RISO presentation of the President's Award. And we have Margaret Driscoll from Masbo. I hope I'm saying that acronym how people pronounce it. Okay, great. Thank you, Kevin, for preparing me. Jack Kelly from the Boston Business Technology. And the warty is Christine Lynch from Desi, who is very generously making a donation. So I'd like to say a few words about what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah. Thank you so much to the school committee, Superintendent Regerio and business administrator and Masbo member, Kevin McHugh, for your kind invitation to join you this evening. It was a great privilege at our 56th Annual Institute Educational Conference in May to present the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials' President's Award to Christine Lynch, Governance and Facilities Programs Manager at the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and resident of Lynn. One of the highest honors in the organization, the President's Award recognizes an individual for contributing to the growth and improvement of the profession and contributions to his or her school district, community, and/or the association. It is sponsored by RISO, Boston Business Technology, and includes a $1,000 contribution to the Lynn Public Schools. and includes a $1,000 contribution to the Lin Public Schools in her honor. Ms. Lynch is the twenty-ninth recipient of the Masbo President's Award. In announcing the award, Masbo President Mary Ellen Norman, who unfortunately could not be with us this evening, noted that she is a two thousand and fifteen Friend of the Masbo Award recipient who currently advises, assists, and supports eighty-six regional school districts, serving approximately one hundred and twenty-nine thousand students in over one hundred and twenty towns and has been assisting, serving, and supporting Masbo members for over thirty years in a number of different capacities. Her depth of knowledge and expertise provides mentorship to the next generation of Desi staff and school business officials that follow behind her. Masbo is grateful to RISO and Boston Business Technology, a longtime Masbo and devoted Masbo solution provider for their sponsorship of this award. So I will invite Jack Kelly to kindly present your gift to Ms. Lynch. At this time, Mr. Kelly, would you kindly present the $1,000 district contribution to School Committee Chair and Mayor Jared Nicholson and Superintendent Rogero and members of the committee?
My pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Everybody stand right over here, please, for a photo.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question. I want to know how Lorraine's golf game is.
I really, really miss you, Chris. I hope so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the donation?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the donation.
Second. Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is Lin Community Enrichment Program, Michelle Guzman. Please.
Hello. What do you mean? For this opportunity to address about Lin Community Enrichment Program? Thank you to Mayor Nicholson, new Superintendent Rogero, and school committee members and staff, supporting staff. Thank you. As you guys know, my name is Michelle Guzman, and I'm the coordinator for the Lin Community Enrichment Program. And I'm just here just to do a little quick report about what we did last year, what are the new things that we're going to do this year, and where LCP is going. Back in February third of this year, I reintroduced the LCP as a program looking for, looking to expand into more areas. And the, and, and this is slide number three. I don't know how really you guys are going to go through that. But on slide number three, where it says LCP is expanding. The expansion was mostly in three, three areas, even though I'm focusing on two. The first one is the job skills oriented classes, computer classes in English and Spanish, conversational Spanish, ESOL, public speaking, and K decorating. And then the other ones, mostly that we're working on right now, the par professionals, the introduction to oil burner is going to come right now in the fall. And then interpreter and the Microsoft suite, it's on the works right now. And the third that I don't mention here, but it's more of a relaxing leisure classes, you know, oil painting, yoga, t-shirt quilting is one of our favorites right now. So definitely it's, it's our favorite for some students. And as you can see, I, I put some pictures of our career oriented. We have conversational Spanish. It was good because it, it, it came, teachers from the, the district came, some monitors, some nurses, and this was a little bit more from different areas, lawyers, real estate. So it was kind of like a popular and very satisfactory to see people coming from different, different backgrounds and different levels. Then you have the other classes, ESOL. What I like about that specific slide is because you have the, the teacher teaching, and then they are interacting with each other. And so it's not only the academic one, it's also interacting. And then K decorating and a couple of the other ones. But the last, I think this is slide number eight, it's about the par professionals. The par professionals, in addition to all these classes that I mentioned, I'm very happy to say that we are finally giving the test. We are conducting the test. In August, I had six students. There was a nightmare with the computers, but we just went over that hump, and now we were able to do it. There were, out of the six from August came four of them and two new ones. One of them is actually a graduate from Lin Tech from last year, from the early education, and she passed the test. So now she is, she got an offer from one of the schools, and she is going to be hired, and she had that certificate. So that, that's very exciting. The other thing is that I'm going to connect her with the North Shore Community College to see how is it that she can pursue her education and get an associate's degree. So we, we already talked with that, and we were looking for to work on a grant that the state had, but unfortunately, the time just didn't work out with that. But the connection is there already. Then now in October, I have nine people that are enrolled, and I have seven computers. So I'm just trying to figure it out, how can I add more computers so then I can have, I can have at least ten? Out of those eight candidates, three pass. One is going to take a test in, in October, and then four unfortunately need to retake the test. Even though they fail or didn't pass, during the summer, I was very lucky to work with two teachers from Reed and two teachers from Marshals, and they put together preparatory class in Schoology with the assistant of Deb Morel from the curriculum department. Kudos to my curriculum department. They have access to this material, so they are getting ready. So the ones that study for September, and now they are studying for October. The thing that we are coordinating, that I'm coordinating now is how to do it in person, especially for the ones that were not able to pass. So some things are going definitely on wheels, and hopefully they will continue that way. So now we move to slide number nine, where it says new heights for LCP. So for, for the fall, and that was one of the things that when we finished the spring last year, I wanted it to think about how can we provide a little bit more of connections and opportunities to our students, not only coming to, you know, take a class and that's it, right? And where, where do you put those efforts? So as an adult education career advisor, I know that Desi has this form that is called EICP. It's kind of like the IEP, but the C is for career, career oriented. So part of my plan is that during the orientation, when they come and learn about LCP and what, you know, how LCP became a program, I want them to fill this out, that is component of current skills, values, and interest. If you identify what is it that the things that you like, I think that you're going to be looking for things to do and not necessarily to work, because you have to, right? It's part of your, you know, feel, feel, fulfill. Transferable skills, you know, some of the people that are within our community are very skillful, but they might not think that they can apply to a need another different job, right? Educational goals and short and long-term goals, okay? So this is something that we agree with the LCP board. We also want to strengthen our relationships with other organizations. We are already going to interview with the new executive director of Pathways. I already have that connection with North Shore Community College and also with New American Center, which with New American Center, they, they have clients that speak different languages. And so my next step is with the non-credit department at North Shore Community College, try to see if we can get the interpreter's certificate, so then we can have available interpreters in different languages, not only English and Spanish, which is the most common one, but maybe in Haitian Creole, Arabic, and these other languages, right? The same as, I think I'm copycat the, the city hall. They, they have these other translators. So with all that, as a result of all these things happening at LCP, I would like to mention the current scope of my work as a coordinator. And that, I believe, is in slide number eleven, that it says LCP current scope of work. And I focus all the tasks that I'm doing in these areas. The most important one, I think, that is nice in a certain way, but is also challenging, is that we are becoming a multilingual program. Right now, we are doing it English and Spanish, but then I'm working already with somebody from the Haitian community to create a computer class in, in Haitian, Haitian Creole. You know that if you, sometimes if you are explained in your native language, it's easier to cap, to capture the information, and then you can apply it, right? So if I know that certain things in the computer is called in a certain way in, in Haitian Creole, but the function is the same in English, it will be easier for you to understand it and retain that information. So that's kind of like the, the big thing, because it's not only one, I'm not only serving customers that are speaking English, they also speaking another language, Spanish. So if one of the classes takes ten, ten students, the other ones, especially the ESOL classes, I have twenty and twenty-five students. And that requires registration and all the paperwork, that I'm not going to bore, bore you with that. But I definitely want to make, mention that also I'm responsible for the website, the Facebook interactions, the sessions. Each session is divided into what we have to do before the session, during the session, and after the session. So it's basically a lot of things, administrative logistics, each session, promotion, and the community organizing collaborations, which I mentioned, strengthen that relationships, a little bit of PR. So with all that, I'm just going to say that the expansion is great, but it's not possible to maximize these opportunities by, by only one person. You know, it's, what I want to be able to do is focus, obviously, in building those opportunities for our students, but also focus on the outreach efforts to enroll more students. But in the area, not only where are low income, or maybe the language is a barrier, but also be able to offer those opportunities that are available within the city. Most of the things that I hear about is like, oh, I didn't know we have this in Lin, especially the computers in Spanish, like, I didn't know, I didn't know. So I want to be able to reach out to that. But managing the, the program doesn't let me to do that. It's, it's challenging to, to, to know that. So that's why I mentioned about maybe an outreach assistant. So then, you know, I handle the, managing the daily day basis, and then somebody else can do the outreach for that. With that being said, I do mention, I describe more of what I just mentioned about PR and all that. But I want to close with that we are gonna, we're getting ready for fall. The flyer is being finished. The website is being done. And we're going to start signing up during the first week, first, second week of October. You have the dates over there. Obviously, when I have the flyer, I will ask the school and the support of, obviously, the school committees to help me to spread the word. And the par professionals, as I mentioned, is October. I already have nine students, and one of the things is to be able maybe to reach out to other districts to let them know, especially in the North Shore. I got a lady from Gloucester, and she was very happy to come. They can do the tests at home or remote, but I think they, they, that idea coming in into a place and do it makes the difference, makes them feel different. And so also, I, I hope I can get them the in-person class, which I, is just about logistics to get them available with our programs. So that is what I am getting ready for. Any questions?
Member Peña, and then Member Dugan.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for the presentation. I really liked it. It was very informative. One, one aspect about the, the program that I do admire, I love is the, with the par professionals, and then probably introducing them into a, a pipeline to further education, because it's needed. We really need that support, you know, in, in our schools. And I really like that. I like that, that someone could take the test and become certified and, you know, get the credits. It's, it's, it's amazing, you know, I like it.
Thank you.
Especially bilingual.
Member Dugan?
Yeah, sure. Michelle, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I mean, it's just, it's great what you're up to and what you've been doing. I especially like the graduate from Lin Tech. I think, Member Peña started to touch on that a little bit, and just, you know, getting kids from Lin. And, you know, who knows better the students than Lin, than kids from Lin. So I think that's great that you're, you're a part of that, and I'm really excited for it. And, and I thank you, so. Thank you for your hard work, yeah.
The early education, actually, from last year, I was able to have that conversation with them. And so they are getting, getting them ready right now. There are like about twelve students. They are studying, and then when they are ready, they're going to take the test. And of course, as part of the district, I said that, you know, they, we can just schedule the, the, the test date, and we can get it done. So definitely, it's a lot of work, but we're going to improve those areas.
Right. It's paying off, though, your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question. You said you only had seven computers, right, present?
Yeah, but, but it's not because they are not available. It's, it's about the, the wall IT and trying to get them down, organize the time. I've been.
Does that look like?
So the thing is that the kids are using the, the computers until two, one forty-five, two, two o'clock? Or two forty-five? I'm guessing with the time. I think it's two forty-five. And then there is only one hour of window between me going into Lin Tech and then connecting with the IT, so then they can help me out, break that security wall, and be able to download properly the, the program. So that's why I only have seven right now. So I'm, I'm trying to coordinate that with them. But then I, I did try it at the annex, and it did not work out. So I had to go back to main building.
Maybe that's something we could look into.
I, I wrote it down. We will look into it.
All right. Okay, yes.
I just want to acknowledge that, that LVTI grad is at our Early Childhood Center, thriving. I met her the other day and has already immersed her, and has already immersed herself in the staff and has become invaluable. I mean, she just seems so happy. There are also some students placed there from LVTI, supporting the program.
Awesome. So we have several success stories.
Member Gailey?
Michelle, I'm just so thrilled that we're having the test in Lin.
Michelle, I'm just so thrilled that we're having the test inland, they don't have to go to east Oshkosh, and that it's going, they're passing that test, you're guiding them into North Shore or to a college. I, I totally agree with my colleagues, and thank you very much for your hard work.
All right, thank you. Looking forward to do it more.
Appreciate all your work on this, and, and all the collaboration that it takes, so thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Great, next item is the Goals Presentation from Superintendent Rosario.
Okay, so in your packets, you see a document that says, School Year 2223 Goals, it says, Junto Logramos, Together We Achieve, that's our tagline for this year. I have, I am keeping the goals that Dr. Totwiler had last year, because a lot of our work together really was built around those goals. I have made some adjustments that I'm going to bring to your attention. I'm not going to read through this word for word, I, I think we know a lot of it from last year, but there are some adjustments that I want to bring to your attention. So the first adjustment on the Student Learning Goal, they're the same three goals, but they're in a different order. So the first goal that I have is increase the percentage of English learners making progress towards English language proficiency to at least 49%. That was actually the third goal, not that one goal was more important than another, but I felt strongly, knowing as the superintendent and someone who's worked in the district for a long time, how much need there is for our students with second languages, that I wanted to elevate that goal to number one. So I just moved that from three to one. The other adjustment, when you go to key actions, I moved the Acceleration Learning Section to the top, because I felt that that is a priority in our actions. And so in the Acceleration Philosophy, it talks about using the Department of Ed's Blueprint, the Massachusetts Blueprint for English Learners. It talks about using the Department of Ed's Acceleration Roadmap, to ensure that all schools prioritize culturally responsive instruction, develop teacher leader capacity to align the district and school level systems, to utilize data to identify what students need, and integrate targeted, individualized, standards-based instruction, and to create and implement a system of frequent progress monitoring and responsive action planning through our I L Ts, which is Instructional Leadership Teams, P L Cs, our Professional Learning Communities, and our school-level Data Champions, who are part of all of that work. Below that, it talks about our Earl Initiative. We actually started this initiative last year as our, as part of our acceleration work. We worked with the principals each month during their principal meetings, specifically around this, this component. And basically, it's all about equitable access to rigorous learning, and establishing the essential systems for that, the I L T, the P L C, and the Data Champions. So we started that process last year, helping principals understand, our school leaders understand that system. And now this year, we're implementing, where they have been given a budget, they have been asked to design, you know, create a team, an I L T team at their schools, that help the principal in digging into the data, the Data Champions are part of that team, they work through, walking the team through how we look at data, what, what specifically we're looking for to identify, and then sharing that out to the larger community of the school through the P L Cs. This is a system that our turnaround schools have had. I, myself at Harrington, we had this system, but it has always been in those schools, because they were provided additional funding and they were able to fund that. We are committed for the, at least the next two years, to really dig into this work and provide enough funding for schools to really develop these systems and the teams, and then it will build their capacity at the school level. And there will be a presentation at a later school committee meeting that will go a little bit deeper into that process and exactly what that looks like at the school level. We'll be sharing that at a later time. The Blended Learning is continuing, it is district-wide, but it is an opt-in still. We have a number of teachers who took it on this summer and got, became mentors, and we continue to have teachers who are interested in it and are pursuing it. So we are continuing that initiative, and it's been a great addition to our instructional practices. Spring Board will continue, as it did last year. In the meeting, Social Emotional Needs, one I really want to highlight is the second bullet, which is the implementation of our new clinical model across the district. We have implemented that. It, we, our Tina Huffnagle, who is our acting Social Emotional Learning Executive Director, spent countless hours this summer interviewing social workers and interviewing for the clinical supervisor positions, and so we have now that model functioning. Certainly, we are working with the schools and the teams to really fine tune what, you know, how that works, because it is new, but we're very excited about this model and the potential that it has. After-school Intervention and Support, we always are looking to expand our after-school programming to support our schools and our students, and of course, the Spring Board Literacy Intervention Model is still in place. And in terms of focus on family partnership, the addition of our 17 Family Engagement Professionals, which are our family and community coordinators, the AKA the old parent liaison, we've increased the number of those positions, and we, they meet monthly to learn together. We're looking to expand our interpretation and translation trainings, opening that up to anyone who's interested, and later in this document, you'll see there's some actual data on how many are participating, or already have participated. And under attendance, our wellness teams will still keep going forward. In that lane, I want to bring to your attention the bullet, that's the addition of a case manager to the attendance office team, who is focusing on dropout recovery and on students most at risk of dropping out. And so that's a new position to that team, and it's a, it's gonna be a great addition to that team. And then under Climate and Culture, the last bullet, the implementation of the new high school schedule featuring the Advisory Block. This summer, the secondary schools put teams together to work on lessons that would be done during Advisory Blocks, resources that could be used, videos that could be shared, so that we could calibrate across the secondary schools what that Advisory Block would be utilized for in educating our students and supporting them. Under District Improvements, we focused, we're focusing in, goal number one is around refining and expand opportunities for instructional leadership to provide optimal learning experiences for all students in the 2223 school year and beyond. We are continuing the Lynch Leadership through B C. We have three current sitting principals who are participating in the leadership program. It is Jim Kennison from Callahan, John Braga from Lynn English, and Fred Gallo from L V T I. Every principal, actually Molly Cohen went through that program, every principal that has gone through this program, you see an incredible development of their skills as leaders in the schools. And so we are really invested in providing this opportunity for our leaders. The Lynch Program has a micro-academy, that if you remember, last year, we started with Cohort One, which were department heads in E L A and Mass, and then there were some assistant directors, a couple of V Ps, a couple of department heads in special ed who participated in that cohort. They did a training all year with coaching, all around what good instruction looks like, how you identify that good instruction, how you give feedback to staff around their instruction in a respectful and supportive way. That cohort is continuing this year, it's Cohort One continues in the second year, and we started two new, two new cohorts, another department head cohort that will have science, history, some additional special education, some additional assistant directors that will do Cohort Two, so they'll, they're starting their year one this year. And then we're doing it with our principals. And that started this week, their first session, and that is to really build our leaders, we have a lot of new leaders, school leaders, and we want to build their capacity around their feedback to teachers and how they're identifying instruction, and how they're working with their other school leaders. So, you know, secondary principals with their department heads, so that the language is the same and the process is the same. In that same column, the Instructional Leadership Teams, I already talked about, about implementing that, and then we're doing a book talk, remind me, 13 different groups? Yes, 13 different groups doing book talks with Ayana Cooper, she's an author of the book, And Justice for Ls, it's a Leader's Guide to Creating and Sustaining Equitable Schools. We actually, as an executive leadership team, had our first session on Monday. There's five chapters in the book, so we have five weeks that we are meeting with Ayana around each chapter of the book. Our principals are doing it, our C I Ts are doing it, our department heads are doing it, like every leadership role within our schools are participating in this book talk. They'll get P D Ps for it, it's five hours total, it's an hour for each chapter, the conversations are really good, and Ayana is great to work with, she's got, she's actually from this, the Boston area originally, and so she is very familiar with, you know, being in the North Shore. And then for Goal Two, around successfully implement actions in an effort to increase and retain racially and linguistically diverse staff, and engage these steps as part of a five-year plan to increase the staff of color by at least 1% each year. What I want to highlight here, and it links to Michelle Guzman's discussion around the paras, we have implemented, we started implementing this last year, but it was, it got a slow start, but we did have some students that participated. We implemented a Future Teachers Club at some of the high schools. Well, now it's From Lynn, For Lynn Future Teachers Club, and it links to, we want our own to be developed and become our teachers. And they, they, when they, these, the students that are currently in it have a bag, a book bag, that says that line on the front. We are, we have some of our L V T I Early Childhood Students getting, you know, face-to-face experience in the classrooms. We have hired, as you heard, some of our students as paras, and it's been very exciting to see our own Lynn kids become staff. So I wanted to highlight that. And then the last goal around establish and/or expand the foundation and structures for increasing family connection and partnership, I wanted to bring to your attention the La Resposta Program. If you recall, last year, we started that program in Marshall, Breed, and Lynn English. We've expanded it to classical. Many, I'm not sure of all, but many of the La Resposta family members who worked for us last year returned this year, and it's been a great program. The students make connections because they know them from being in the neighborhood, they know who they are, they see them as family members, and it, what I like to say is it, it creates homeschool, right? Like, that school isn't just school, it's also a home, and that we care for each other, and that including family members into the school as people who keep us safe really makes a different feeling for the school. I'm sure Molly might even be able to touch on that particular program, because she was experienced with it.
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, there was also a pathway from La Resposta into the Lynn Public Schools by becoming paraprofessionals and looking toward getting training and becoming clerks. So it, that was one of the goals of the program, is to also incorporate them and train them towards jobs that they can fill here with us in the Lynn Public Schools. So it has been fantastic, and Pickering is also-
Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry.
-another school that's adopting La Resposta.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, so it was wonderful.
And Deb, we met one of the parents who was a part of La Resposta last year, who's now a paraprofessional who was hired, who's tracked right into the Lynn Public Schools as a full-time employee.
So it's all great connections, Lynn people for Lynn Public Schools. And then the last bullet I want to bring to your attention is the U Mass Translation and Interpretation Training. We've been doing this for the past couple of years, Guillermo Sinelli oversees this and organizes this, and if you look in the third column, I give you some data around, so it's a certification program, it's a U Mass certification, it's not like a medical translation or legal translation certification, it's just U Mass provides a certificate that they have gone through 30 to 45 hours of training with them, and that they can be translators or interpreters in a school system. But you can see in School Year 2021, we had six staff trained for translation. In 2122, we had eight staff trained for translation and four trained in interpreting. Some of those are the same people, because it's two different programs. And, and in this year, we're expanding this work and providing, so far, four staff to be trained in translation and five trained in interpreting, with six staff continuing their work, taking additional workshops in the spring. And we're actually looking to do our own cohort. We missed the deadline, it was, it just came up too quickly with everything, we were trying to, you know, get school year running, and it was a little bumpy there at the beginning. But Guillermo has reached out to U Mass, they, in the spring semester, that we'll have another opportunity where we could potentially do our own cohort and, and increase the number of our paras who can go through this training if they're interested. So again, we're trying to build our capacity to support our families in the best way that we can. Any questions? I, I'm open to answer any questions.
Do you want to vote to approve the goals, or?
Uh, sure, if you want to vote to approve the goals, that'd be great.
In the past, we've approved the goals as a committee, and they're kind of, you know, yeah, so.
Make a motion to approve the goals.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is the Net School Spending Additional Appropriation Update. Mr. McHugh, or, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you. In your packet, you receive two documents. One was a letter we received back in July from the Department of Education regarding our annual update, where we stand with net school spending. In it, you can see, based on a shortfall, we were 2.6% below net school spending, and once we received that, I met with the CFO and the mayor to discuss this. At that time, in my member, the other member, I explained that they gave us some additional funding-
for outside shaded area and body benches for seating. It's a recommendation, Superintendent.
I absolutely recommend. Pam Laramie has been a teacher in LIN for many years and retired, and we're sad to see her go, but are very, very happy to see that she's donating to the school and that her memory will, will, you know, her, her spirit will be at that school forever.
So will the committee?
Yep. Make a motion to approve and accept the donation of $5,000 from former teacher Pamela Laramie to Drewwitz Elementary School for outside shaded area and body benches for seating.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is the net school spending, additional appropriation update. Mr. McHugh, her, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you. In your packet, you received two documents. One was a letter we received back in July from the Department of Education regarding our annual update, where we stay with net school spending. In it, you can see, based on a shortfall, we were 2.6% below net school spending. And once we received that, I met with the CFO and the mayor to discuss this. At that time, in my memo, the other memo, I explained that they gave us some additional funding to offset our last year's budget right at the last minute to, to help that be resolved. And also, we were informed recently that we'd be getting $5 million. And that's the other memo which I gave you, an allocation of what we're recommending, that what projects would be done to ensure that we can kind of close this gap on this year. So that would get rid of the $6 million amount that was carried forward from last year. So you can see, I highlighted a lot of the different projects. Some of these were not put in the budget, you know, due to the fact, I think the biggest one was the Early College Program, which is a great project. But the cost of the food was something we thought we might be able to do, but they have an agreement that we have to go through their provider. And we've been going back and forth, and we finally came to an agreement on a price. So that's the price that would cost us for the year, the cost of the program. All the staff are in the budget, but the actual cost of that $181,000 is not. So at this point, those are the biggest recommendations that, you know, I was unable to plan for. Also, we have, as the mayor stated, the Tracy School, the demo and some paving costs I put in there, as well as the others are upgrades to our technology. They haven't been upgraded actually since 2017. So in technology world, that's a long time. So these are big servers that we use to email and everything else and firewall protection and all that, and all the cables that go with them. So those would be a one-time use of these funds, which would be good. So this would just get us back to where we need to be at this point. Also, some telephones, we have, we ended up hiring, what, about 200 staff this year? So we need more telephones, and some are obviously getting dated and have to replace. So we put a budget line in for that as well. Also, printers, we have a lot of like, not classroom printers, but bigger printers that are in different departments that people share. And we're looking at refreshing those as well because as they get older, the drums go and everything else. So those are, those aren't the big copias, but they're the more of the little printers that you would just send some work to. And the athletics, we're looking to, we received a request to put boys volleyball in place. And the $50,000 is obviously the cost of stipends for people, coaches. It's also uniforms. This would be at all three schools, and it's for officials. Actually, if anyone wants to be an official, this is the best job in the world. You get $92 to be a volleyball official, and there's two at a game. So I would encourage anyone, you just stand there on the ladder and point. So there's that, and there's transportation costs built into that price as well because obviously we have to use busing to move them around as well. So that was that cost. And the new gym floor, that's something that they've been talking about because during the pandemic, we allowed the city to use as a COVID site, and many people got the vaccination, but the floors took a beating. So we're looking at potentially, you know, replace, we'd like to replace that floor. And I want to put money aside for that. That would be a good use to get that gym floor back to where it needs. We're also, well, we met with Mike Donovan on this. We also asked, even potentially just putting a wood floor in the middle for the basketball court and then doing the track and that, I don't know, that epoxy system around it. So it would look really sharp if that had a nice wooden gym floor because that building's used all the time for basketball. So we're exploring that, and that funds would be put aside for that. And the last one was for, we're kind of holding this as a placeholder for the build-out cost of the Market Street. So at this point, we're not definite on this. We're still working with the folks at that building and trying to redefine it, but I just wanted to put a placeholder on that for that amount of money, should we have to go that route. So that's the recommendation that we're bringing forward tonight, utilization of these funds.
Yeah, so just, just a quick note on the, the overall picture here for the Chapter 70 and the, as it relates to the city. I think, you know, obviously, we expect to hit net school spending every year. And we've discussed this over the year, that that's, requires a back-and-forth coordination with the city and the school department because there's no way to know what that number is before the school year when we approve the budget. And so while we expect to hit 100%, we're not going to be able to get there until the following year to do the catch-up. And so we carry over the gap. We're within, we're within the 5% that's allowed, and this is the catch-up. And we're, we're not in a position on the city's side financially to overshoot, which would be another way to do this. But, you know, I think this is a system that we've set up, working with the, the city, the CFO, the superintendent, the, the business manager, coordinating with DESI and the administration of finance to make sure that we are planning for this. And the council has been helpful, involved in that as well, so that we have the stabilization funds that we need to be able to make these investments at this point. And, you know, wanted to do it once we had the visibility into what the number needed to be so that we had plenty of opportunity over the course of the year to use those funds. Member Gaitley and Member Capola?
Kevin, I have a few questions. The, the network switch and cables. Last year, we had a server, and then we were waiting for another server to come in, a big server. Did it come here? I want to know if, did we get it? Is it here now, we all set?
Yes, we did that when we did one upgrade of that system. That was because of the speed. So these are the other servers that are across the district. So, I mean, one note is that we, the city's insurance policy, if you're aware, the Callahan situation. So that we are, we are already purchasing. That one's already been ordered, and it isn't in yet. But at the same time, that's going to be covered by the city's insurance because of the water damage. So we don't have, that's not included in this price. But there's so many servers out there that when they, it's 2017. It's just when I was talking to our technology director, I asked him, I says, you know, we have the chance to, what, you know, what do you, if you needed something, what would you get? And he says, oh, I'd love to get new servers because they're getting old. And things happen, you know, when they get old. So that's, that's where we came up with this project.
Okay. The RISOs, I was over at Classical this week.
These aren't RISOs.
No, 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 I'm going on. That, that, I got the answer. The answer I just want to know is, did we get that server? We got it, it's in, good. RISOs, I was at Classical, and the RISO doesn't work, and people are like having a hard time getting copies. And I want to make sure that every building, especially like English and Classical, have it checked every year. So when teachers go down there to copy, that it's there for them to make multiple copies because we have really large classes. So that's, that's going to help with that, I hope.
This is, these are printers. These are, these are like this big by this big. They're not a desktop on your desk, but they're in like the various locations. The RISO graph machine's a machine. If it's, if there's, that's the bigger machine, like the copy machines?
I know.
If there's a problem with that, there's a sticker on the front of the machine with a number to call. And actually, the gentleman was here tonight. We could have told him tonight when he was given the award. That's the RISO graph guy. You know, we could have sent him. But all they have to do is call, because all the service is included with that. So they just need to call, and they send a tech out to look at it right away.
Okay, I'll let them know that.
And if they don't, please call my office. I'll gladly, we'll make a phone call directly to them as well, if they, if it's not getting serviced.
All right, so that fund is not going to any RISOs?
That's not, no. Though, we lease those on a three-year lease.
Okay.
Because typically, what I find is after three years, they take a beating. They get a lot of copies. I mean, Eric's not on it because he knows that they, they start to really run down. So we get a refresh on those every three years through the lease process.
These, these would be printers like in the main office, in the library, you know, that when you need a quick copy of something? You know, it's like what you'd have at home, but just a little bit better.
Okay, I'll have them call because they, that was my complaint. I'm going down this list. And the next thing on athletics. I had requested middle school hockey with the new assistant curriculum director of
Colleen.
Yes, because there is no middle school hockey. And they're, they're finding that the high school hockey teams are like falling on the wayside. We won't even be able to have a city team if we don't have a feeder team. And I, I don't know. I would like some of this money to go to that so that we can have that program. I would like to have a hockey team in the city of LIN. See, and we have one, at one point, we had three. And then my last question is the 112 Market Street renovation. What is this? What?
So this is a placeholder for the build-out of making it into an early childhood center.
Okay.
However, we are investigating deeper into this. I, Mike Donovan and I have gone there. We're going back next week to take a look at it again.
Let me know.
Sure.
Thank you.
And so we're in kind of a investigation stage. So Kevin wanted to put a placeholder in this because there will be some cost, but it might not be that cost.
So the only request I would have is to think about that athletic hockey team, like with this large money. Maybe we could get that in. That's all my questions. I'm done there. Sorry.
No, no, no. Member Capola?
Okay. Are all of these appropriations net school spending, do they meet our cost for net school spending?
Some of those, we, we have to just double-check on a couple of them. The renovation might be something that may not be at this time. To the best of our knowledge, we believe everything else is possibly going to be net school spending eligible.
And that's $800,000, so it's a large portion of that amount of money.
Some of it might be to a certain dollar amount, but we have to check with the Department of Education. I've already reached out to them, and the gentleman is in Washington at this time. He'll be back next week, so. So that's why, we're just asking to put a placeholder on that. And if, we would come back to the committee at a later date if that needs to be changed.
It just seems such, like a such, a large amount of money to be investing in a rental place that we don't even think we're sure how long we'll be there. Just seems outrageous, seems wasteful to me.
I think that's why we're, as the superintendent said, we're having, we've, we brought Mike Donovan in on the project, and we've already met with him twice, and he's looked at the site himself. But we're going to have another meeting over there next week to really dig into it because that, that does seem like a large number to renovate a piece of property that we don't own.
That we don't own, right, exactly. The other thing is on the letter from the DESI people in regards to our shortfall on net school spending. It's, that's like unacceptable to me. We, we can't be doing this. We did that not too many years ago. We had a lot of fines on it, and there's no reason for it. I can understand what you're saying, Mia, that we, you want to be, you know, we can't, we can't have astronomical amounts over that. But in, this letter came on July 13th, and it's not given to us on the committee. We should at least know that we've, we're in this predicament.
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, this is not what happened a few years ago when we got fined. This is, this is a one-year shortfall. What happened previously were that years carried over, and that was what led to the fines. So this is, this is not the situation you're talking about that happened several years ago.
But it sounds like we're going down the same road.
No, because we're here asking the school committee to approve the appropriation that would catch us up net school spending. So with your support from the committee, we are going down the road we want to be, which is to meet the net school spending.
Okay. You mentioned that it's okay to be 2.5%, I think, under.
Five percent.
Is that what you said? 5% under. But I remember, Kevin, at that time, they were, and it's the same person, Jay Sullivan, who said to us, absolutely not, you need to be at 100%.
So we, we are going to be at 100%, and we have been, the city CFO, Michael Bertino, Kevin McHugh, have been working with Jay Sullivan on this.
Our kids deserve them 100% on the year that they're in school. Not, you know, the following. That, that's a, you know, July 1st to a June 30th. And that amount should have been there. I'm, I'm disappointed.
Yeah, so again, I mean, we, we've been talking about this for years about how the hitting the target in advance is, is not feasible in the way that the system is set up. A huge amount of that cost is a swing in health insurance costs, which depends on the number of LIN public schools employees that actually enroll in the city insurance. And so without that information ahead of time, that's a big part of the shortfall. You'll also see that the contractual salary increase is a big part of this appropriation. And so, you know, as we go through negotiations with responsible, budgeting responsible negotiation, we need to be able to have those funds available to, to pay out those contracts. So that's a big driver of that as well. Mayor Magnolia?
I'd like to move that, to accept this additional budget appropriation.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is the discussion on custodial staffing. As many of you know, this is a item that's managed by the city, ISD, and is the subject of ongoing negotiations between the city and Local 1736. And so we've asked, in response to the questions here, the city's labor and determine, labor and employment attorney, John Slattery, to join us to answer, to go over where we are and answer your questions. So Attorney Slattery, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, committee members. Mayor Nicholson, Superintendent Rugiero. I'd be remiss not to recognize my counterpart, Howard Greenspan, and members of the committee staff. Good evening. So I was, I was asked to appear, I guess, and confirm that the city is in negotiations with the custodial union on the city's side, Local 1736. We do have, unfortunately, with respect to what questions I can answer, we have ground rules, and our ground rules, number one, say that the subject matter of the negotiations cannot be discussed outside the bounds of the actual negotiation sessions. They're confidential, and the failure to adhere to those would result in a Department of Labor Relations complaint either side. I can note for the committee that we have met five sessions already with 1736. Under our rules and regulations, under our ground rules, if one side is unhappy with the pace of negotiations or feels that the negotiations have not continued to move forward or to have some progress, they have the right at that point in time to declare an impasse and to file for arbitration along 24 hours notice to the city if the, if the union does it, and the union, if the city does it. Neither side has done that. In fact, we have scheduled a sixth session, which is scheduled for next week. So having said that, I'd be happy to address questions, but if those questions relate to the subject matter of negotiations, I will not be able to comment on them.
Member Capola?
Okay, it's really not negotiations. I mean, it's not something we do on this side. We're not negotiating that contract. My concern is that we have schools that do, are not staffed with custodians. And that's, that is the real problem there.
So just to be clear, that, that is in the contract, how the custodians are staffed at the different schools? Do you want to speak that a little bit?
Well, what I can say is that there is a, in 2006, 2007, as many of you probably know, I wasn't here, but I've been forced to review the history. There was a reorganization of the custodians. They were transferred over to the city's side. There was some issue at that time as to the performance of custodial duties within the school buildings. There was a dissatisfaction, and so that was transferred over to inspectional services. Under the agreement and a 2015 MOA signed with the union, there is a number of custodial staff that is permitted. The union would disagree with the number. The city has that number at 36. The union argues it's 38. Nonetheless, whichever side of that argument you're on, that's a cap on the number of custodians. That has been accepted by both sides. In order to make up for any additional staff that is needed, there's a provision for external sourcing, which the city does with complete cleaning. And complete cleaning, between complete, complete, complete cleaning and the custodial staff, my understanding is that the buildings are in good condition. I do understand that, I'm certain of the elementary schools do not have senior custodians, and that that is somewhat disconcerting for the principals because they're used to having a particular person there that they could deal with on a regular a particular person there, that they could deal with on a regular basis, who would become essentially part of their staff. We do have that situation at the 11 other elementary schools, unfortunately, those seven positions have remained open, we've put them out for bid, the, the union has not bid on those positions. The city does have the right, under the contract, Articles 14 and Section 32, that they could seek from complete cleaning to put a permanent position at those senior elementary schools. However, we're hoping to work through this issue with the union during negotiations, and we're hoping that we can come to some type of an agreement where the custodians would be willing to bid for those positions.
Member, did you, did you have anything else, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm not satisfied with that answer, but I'll let others ask questions, and then maybe what they come up with will satisfy me.
In your reorganization, back, we're not talking about this contract, to cap it at 36 or 38, are they full-time?
They're full-time equivalents, which allows for full-time employees or two part-time employees, that's also under the 2015 memorandum of agreement, particularly, we had a grievance on this issue recently, and it was put into evidence at the grievance hearing, that the addendum to the 2015 MOA specifically defines FTE as full-time equivalents.
So how is that going to help in our schools? If, it's really frustrating on this side, because our schools, we have our custodians, and some of our buildings are really large, and I was just discussing this earlier with someone in the administration, you know, like, if, if we have, say, for example, Thurgood Marshall, and someone upstairs, third floor is throwing up, and there's one custodian in the building, then someone downstairs is throwing up, how, how are they able to get to both places? I, I just think that we really, in your negotiation, I'm not talking about what we're going to do, but I'm just saying we need 36 full-time at least, and more, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
I appreciate the comment.
But that's the example I want you to keep in your head, if two or three scenarios are happening in a building, how are we going to provide safety to our students? And that's my concern.
Yeah, it concerns me, you know, the lack of custodians in our schools, you know, and, you know, as, just to echo on what Lorraine said, you know, and even some of the custodians are part of the, like, the emergency response team to a school, and it just, I'm very concerned that, you know, we, we don't have, you know, we, we lack custodians in our schools, it's just, it's, you know, as a parent myself with kids in the school, I think it's very important that we have more custodians in our schools.
I, I understand the concerned committee man, Peña, it's, it is a subject of negotiation, that particular subject, I can't really get into it, but there was floated at the last negotiation session, talking about the number of custodians and what FTE means, I can't get into either side's discussion on it because of contract negotiations, half the team is sitting here right now, so I don't want to be the subject of a Department of Labor Relations complaint, but I understand the concern.
Any other questions? Member Capola?
Okay, now, this evening, we, we have two schools that we're just opening up, two more schools, so how are we ever going to do this? And down the road, you know, we don't have the space for all of the kids we have, we still have to look down the road for other additions of buildings. It's, it just doesn't make sense. Here we are, sitting here, and we've underfunded, and we know that last school year, we needed those custodians, you know, why can't we, on this side? We have a need for them, we absolutely have a need, I'm not, I, I don't want to cause a problem for the other side of the city here, but it doesn't solve our, our problem, our problem is, they're not there. Now, we have, all, I think in all of our schools, the custodians have been part of an emergency response team. We can't have a privatized, employees be part of the emergency response team, I mean, that, that makes no sense at all.
Right, so just to, to be clear, the positions have been budgeted for, the positions exist, so our goal is to be filling those positions as well.
But we don't have half-day schools.
I'll just finish the response.
Yeah, so sorry, Olivia.
Thank you, Member Capola. The, the part where we are in negotiations is how to do that, we are fully expecting to continue to negotiate, that's, that's what we're here to do, and, you know, as, as Attorney Slattery said, the particulars of that are not, we're not at liberty to, to discuss.
I will note that we've engaged in five negotiation sessions, it is our goal, we have another meeting scheduled next week, it is our goal to try to achieve a voluntary agreement with the union, the staffing issue is an issue, we are trying to reach a voluntary agreement, that is the goal.
And, and the other, the other question about the contracting services, just to reiterate what Attorney Slattery said, we, we have not moved forward with doing that out of a goal of resolving this by having those positions be filled, so that, that's what we're working for.
But they are working in the daytime, the privatized companies.
They're, they're not filling those positions.
If I, if I may, Member Capola, the 2015 MOA provides that 1736 custodians cannot work in conjunction with complete cleaning. So if it ends up that there's an opening, either because someone is out sick, or someone's on workers' comp, and that particular custodian has to be moved to another school, then it does have to be complete cleaning that's brought in, they can't work with a custodian from the, from the union at that school, so it requires some movement. So you are correct that there are complete cleaning working during the day, but that is permitted by contract, that was negotiated, specifically negotiated in the 2015 memorandum.
Even though...
And then, and just on that point, we're not, we're not, we're not filling those positions via the...
Right, we're not, we could, I say the city could fill them under both the outstanding CBA provisions, Articles 14 and 32, and under the MOA, but the mayor has chosen not to do that, because we're seeking a voluntary agreement with the custodians.
The one thing that we did have discussion on, and I, you know, I'm not sure if we have tapes on it or whatever, but, you know, when all of this, 2006, 2007 went down, we were always promised that the, there would be nobody from a private company in the schools during the time when school was in session, and, and, you know, it was very clear to teachers, you know, you have to be out by 3:45, because the private cleaners are coming in, and we were, you know, assured at all times that, that it wouldn't, that they wouldn't be there during the daytime, when the students were there, and staff was there. And that doesn't seem to be, like, somewhere along the line, our discussion here has, has not been honored.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I was also not here in 2006, we have the agreement to go on, the contractual agreement, which, you know, Attorney Slattery is very familiar with, and, and that's what...
And if I may, Member Capola, the 2015 MOA, I wasn't here for that either, but it specifically allows the use of external contractors if the staffing of the custodians that are available are insufficient to meet the school needs, and sufficiently allows that to occur during the day. I don't know what was discussed in 2006, but the city is not violating the contract when it did that, I'm sure if we were violating the contract, we'd have grievances, Department of Labor Relations complaints, that has not been the case. The city does operate within the confines of that contract and using external sources. Again, we could operate, the city could operate to fill those now permanently, since they've been out to bid since 2021, for, I think, the A-bone and the Ford School, and for the other five schools, they've been out to bid since April 2022, no members of the unions have bid for that, which is a demonstrated lack of interest in it, and that could result in us, in the city, moving forward with appointing external sources there, but the city has chosen not to do that.
Just one last question.
Okay, and then, Member, Member Peña's work.
Just, you know, on that note, are you telling us then, that the only employees you will ever have as custodians are just the ones that are there? In other words, we wouldn't be hiring, or on that side, wouldn't be hiring new custodians?
No, if I said that, I'm sorry, that is not the impression I want to leave. There is, again, though there is disagreement on whether the MOA speaks to 36 custodians or 38 custodians as the number, that is a minimum number under the contract, and if it falls below 36, from the city's perspective, they will hire to get back to 36. The union wants that number at 38, that has been a source of disagreement, I'm not going to sit here today and say they're right or they're wrong, I'm just going to say it's been a source of disagreement, but even if their number were accepted, then if the city got below 38, they would have to hire. So, the 2015 MOA, which was a product of collective bargaining between the union and the city, and I can tell you that we had an arbitration on this matter, and it was admitted at the arbitration that that contract went back and forth between the union, and between the U, AFSCME, state local union, state union, and the city, and that both sides contributed to the language of that agreement, that agreement is what came up with the sort of minimum custodial staffing, so both parties were in on that, and both parties helped come up with that language, and we are bound by that 2015 MOA.
Member Peña?
Yeah, I just want to elaborate, touch on what Donna was saying, I thought I was under the impression too, that during the day, that the cleaning company couldn't come into the schools, and I, I have seen them myself, and I don't know if there was an MOA done, this is before my time, but I just want to say, as a, as a parent, you know, with, with kids in the school system, and as a union member, we need qualified custodians in our schools. I hope that we find a resolution to this, because it's very important that we have, you know, they're part of the emergency, you know, response team, and we need qualified union people to do this work, you know, and, and that's, that's just my feeling, and I hope we can find a resolution to this, you know, they deserve it.
Other questions from the committee? Thank you, Attorney Slattery.
It just brings up one question.
Member Gailey?
It just keeps coming in my mind, are they quarried? Are these people that are coming into our buildings, that are working with the private company, are they quarried going into our buildings? They need to be quarried, anyone that works with our children in that building need to be quarried, and I want to be guaranteed that they're quarried.
My understanding is that everybody who's hired is quarried by the city, most of our, most of our unions have agreements that permit the quarry, and I can't imagine that for the school, they're not quarried when they come in.
Okay, but this is a private company.
The private company is, is vetted through the contract, I don't know the answer to that question, because I haven't seen the contract, but I'd be surprised if they're not vetted, I'd be surprised if they weren't quarried.
Okay, I just need to know that, like, please, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Slattery.
Thank you, members of the committee, Mayor Nicholson.
Okay.
Superintendent Rugiero, Mr. Greenspan, and members of the staff.
Thank you. Next item of the agenda is ratification of votes if any taken in Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee Meeting, Member Gailey.
Yes, there were a lot of ratifications of votes, the first thing that we did in Buildings and Grounds was, there was a motion to name the early college high school, the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy, and move that to the full committee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, the second item on Buildings and Grounds was to make a mo, they made a motion to name the early childhood center, the Virginia Button Early Childhood Center, and if the school was moved, her name was, is to be moved with the building, and it was moved to the full committee.
Second.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, the third item on Buildings and Grounds today was, there was a motion made to name the Ford Elementary School Gymnasium, the Dr. Claire Crane Gymnasium, and moved it to the full committee.
Second.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And the fourth item on Buildings and Grounds was, a motion was made to accept the, accept 47 Walnut Street next to Tracy Elementary School for school use, and move to the full committee.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And that's it for the Buildings and Grounds.
Great. Any votes in the Personnel Subcommittee, Member Capola?
Yes, there were two, we approved two job postings, the first job posting was position of Director of State Federal Foundation Grants and Regulatory Compliance, move in, forward in a motion.
That was a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
The next one is a procurement specialist motion to move forward. Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Any votes in the Policy Subcommittee Meeting?
Yes, we had one, we had a motion to accept the changes to the admission to the LVTI policy, as outlined by Principal Gala, which is in our packets.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move up the final section?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent?
Yes, so, as I did last time, I, I'm a fan of quotes, so I'm going to start with a quote, "Knowledge of languages is the doorway to wisdom," by Roger Bacon. "As we enter the fourth year of our five-year district strategic plan, we continue to move forward with the mindset of go slow to go fast. This means continuing to take the time to carefully evaluate where we are and where we want to go. It means continuing to take the time to listen to our stakeholders' experiences, thoughts, and wishes. What results from this process is a document in which we all believe drives our work over the life of, the life of this plan. We will continue with the same careful analysis, planning, and collection of input to ensure long-term success, and will look forward to entering a new district strategic plan process under a new superintendent in the future. This week marks the third full week of the school year, there are areas of great success, and there are also areas of concern that need noting. First, I need to acknowledge that this school year has not started the way we had hoped. The transition from e-school to power school has been very difficult, and continues to be, which has had an impact on every aspect of our work. The student information system is at the heart of everything we do, from scheduling, transportation, and how we communicate with our families. I need to express my sincere apologies again to any family who has been impacted by this difficult transition. We need to do better, and we're working hard to get our systems running correctly. The good news is that we are making great progress on these issues. Much of our student and family information has been rolled over and corrected, allowing for school messenger to be up and running, with many of our other systems being updated. Transportation issues seem to be running smoother, I would say, not smoothly, I'm going, I'm going to adjust that, with approximately ninety percent of riders arriving on time to school each day, and although staffing continues to be a challenge for our school leaders, who continue to reach out to find licensed and qualified people to fill our open positions. Additional successes to report, our Spanish-English dual-language programming, Compañeros, continues to thrive, serving more than 200 students. Compañeros Connery opened this month with a lot of enthusiasm from parents and students. There are currently two kindergarten classrooms at Connery, and will expand upward at a grade level each, each year. We have a current waitlist of five students, and we will continue to pull from this waitlist all year long to keep the SEI and dual-language classrooms balanced, and will add to the waitlist as students enter. Compañeros Harrington is now available pre-K through grade two, and will continue to expand upward in grade level each year. In pre-K, there are a total of 12 students enrolled, with additional openings still available. Students must turn four by September 1st to enroll. In kindergarten, there are 25 students enrolled in each of the dual-language classrooms, and 15 to 17 students enrolled in the two SEI classrooms. There is a waitlist of four students for Harrington Kindergarten, and like Connery, we will continue to add to this waitlist all through the school year as new families arrive and pull from it as spaces become available. In grade one, there are 25 students enrolled in all four classrooms, both the dual-language and the SEI classrooms. There is a waitlist of three students that will continue to be added and pulled from. In grade two, there are 25 students enrolled in each of the two dual-language classrooms, and 27 students enrolled in the two SEI classrooms. We are still seeing a large interest in dual-language as new second graders enter the district, but are working to place all students who are requesting dual-language into dual-language classrooms. Both Compañeros programs are fully staffed, with nine teachers and four paraprofessionals across the two buildings, and one dual-language coach. All staff members are fully bilingual and belligerent. Many of our teachers are proud Lynn Public School alumni or longtime staff members in LPS, and all but two new teachers this year were hired internally. All are either licensed or actively working on finalizing their licenses. We continue to receive a lot of interest from the community, with many families calling to ask about dual-language even before coming in to register their children. We also receive a lot of inquiries from community members interested in working in the dual-language program. This year, we will be able to offer opportunities for LVTI students enrolled in the early childhood program to observe and help in the dual-language classrooms, providing them with real-world experience right here in LPS. It is our hope that these same students will then return to Lynn Public Schools to work as teachers, paras, and other positions. Finally, to further elaborate on our successes, is the news that we have been awarded two grants, the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Grant for $80,000, and the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative Cohort III Grant for $538,000. More information about this grant will be shared at a later date, and I would publicly like to thank Jackie Gallo, who worked very hard on that grant. And just to inform you of a new grant opportunity that we are currently investigating, there is a grant for improving ventilation and air quality in public school buildings. Lynn is eligible to receive $4.4 million for this potential work, and we are working with Mike Donovan to possibly apply for that grant. And then I felt it appropriate to share an update on our Compañeros Spanish-English Dual Language Program as we celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month between September 15th and October 15th. Dual-language programming is an opportunity to elevate the value of being bicultural, bilingual, and belligerent. As you know, 70% of our students identify as Hispanic, and National Hispanic Heritage Month allows us to open the school year focused on the diverse traditions and cultures of our student community. Our diversity is our greatest strength, and we are committed to celebrating the historical and present contributions of Hispanic authors, doctors, scientists, and leaders during this month and throughout the school year for our students to have windows, mirrors, and doors as they engage in their learning. Juntos logramos. Together we achieve.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions from the committee? Yeah. Member Magnolia.
I have a question about the Chartwells. Can I ask that at this time? So when one looks up school menus, you go to the, you know, Lynn Public Schools page, and then you click on the food service, and then that takes you to the outside page. There are often meals missing. Is that a direct result of this? So you'll look up, say, elementary school breakfast, and it'll say banana, and that's it. So already this year, I can tell you, because this is how in my house, we look up what the meals are, there have been several breakfasts and several lunches that have been missing. And it was something that I was just sort of thinking it was a beginning-of-the-year glitch, and now that I see this, I wonder, it's not that there isn't food being served, there is. It's just not...
It's just not on the calendar.
It's not being reported what the meals are. And I checked them that morning, so it's not like I'm looking weeks in advance and they're not posted.
Yeah. Historically, when you clicked on it, a calendar would come up, and all of the meals would be there. So there must be some kind of glitch. We will look into it.
No, there is, there is no calendar. You can only do the day-by-day function.
Ah.
That used to be the calendar. We'll check into that.
Yes, yeah. I just wondered if it had something to do with this. And I'm only looking at elementary school. I have not investigated widely around the other schools, but it is the district-wide elementary calendar.
We'll get, we'll look at that tomorrow.
We will definitely look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Magnolia. All right. So we would now look for a motion to go into executive session. If you could, in the motion, state those three.
Okay. Make a motion to move to go into executive, request for executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to ASME 93 Local 1736 and the LSAA. The discussion of these matters, which involve strategy and an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining position of the public body. And also a request for executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel principals, executive directors, and LCEP program, as well as a request for executive session to approve the executive session minutes for September 8th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to return to regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
There were two votes taken for us to bring to regular session to approve first the one-year contract. Go ahead.
One-year agreement between the Lynn School Committee and Local 1736 for a one-year contract, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, to increase the base salary retroactive to July 1, 2021, 0.5% plus an additional 2.5%.
What's the word of the committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And then a second contract?
The second contract would be to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Lynn School Committee and Local 1736 for a contract term effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, according to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of agreement, which will be attached to the minutes of...
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
See no further business?
Yep. Here's...
Oh, I will wait till they sign.
But also approve...
I don't think we need...
The exact minutes? Maybe I'll have to do it again. Learn to say it again?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me adjourn.
Just making sure that we didn't need anything else before I do that. That motion takes precedence.